Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. I am not a national or state entity. I am a citizen of the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call and roll.
Councilmember Erby, here. Councilmember Page, here. Councilmember Wassinger, here. Councilmember Gray, here. Councilmember Dolan, here. Councilmember Trachis, present. Councilmember Harder, here. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of April 4th, 2017. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Journal is moved. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
May I?
Yeah.
I move to suspend the rules in order for the purpose of adopting and presenting a resolution recognizing Delta Sigma Theta sorority on the occasion of its members' annual visit to the St. Louis County Council for the presentation of a proclamation by County Executive Steve Stinger to members of Delta Sigma Theta sorority.
Sir, second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Rules are suspended. Please read Resolution Number Two.
Resolution Number Two, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Page, Wassinger, Walton Gray, Dolan, Trachis, and Harder. Resolution, whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January 13th, 1913, by 22 collegiate women at Howard University, and whereas the St. Louis Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, originally chartered as Lambda Sigma, has been committed to public service in St. Louis for 90 years, and whereas the first public act performed by the Delta founders was their participation in the historic Women's Suffrage March in Washington, D.C. in March of 1913, and whereas every Delta works for the enactment of laws to protect the unfortunate and the appeal of laws which deprive human beings of their rights and privileges, and whereas the Deltas have become increasingly involved in issues at the local, state, federal, and global level, having received special consultative status with the United Nations, and whereas Deltas from across the nation travel to Washington, D.C. to participate in Delta Days at the nation's capital, Deltas from the city of St. Louis gather at St. Louis City Hall to participate in Delta Days at St. Louis City Hall, and today, Deltas of the St. Louis Alumni Chapter will gather for the 13th Annual Delta Evening at St. Louis County Council. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows Section One. The County Council welcomes the St. Louis Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated to this evening's council meeting and extends its deepest appreciation for their commitment to public service and dedication to improving the lives of people in the St. Louis area for the last 90 years.
Thank you. I move for adoption of Resolution Number Two.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
So Chair, I'm happy to say that on Resolution Number Two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number Two is adopted.
Mr. Chair, may I read some portions of my proclamation? I won't read the repetitive portions of the resolution, but whereas the SLA continues to impact the St. Louis community by implementing community-based programs through their five-point programmatic thrust, economic development, educational development, international awareness, involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement, and whereas the St. Louis area has benefited greatly from the various mentor programs, including the Rights of Passage area program and the Delta Twinkles, with a current membership of more than 250, the SLA will continue to perpetuate the goals and ideals of the 22 visionary founders in the areas of sisterhood, scholarship, and service, and whereas the SLA is increasingly involved in important issues at the local, state, and federal levels and in global issues, and they participate in Delta Days in the nation's capital, in Delta Day at St. Louis City Hall, and they are gathering for their 13th Annual Delta Evening at the St. Louis County Council. Now therefore, I, Stephen V. Stinger, St. Louis County Executive, welcome the Deltas and do hereby proclaim April 11th, 2017, as St. Louis Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Day.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Mr. Chair, we have no bid openings this evening, so I'll move to Communications. Under Communications, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters, so I'll move to Road and Bridge Matters. Under Road and Bridge Matters, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive, file, plan, specifications, and detailed estimate cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended, please.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Under other Communications, Mr. Chair, item number one, Sixth District.
Please hold on the order of business.
Subordered.
Item number two, Sixth District.
Receive and file, please.
Subordered.
Item number three.
Receive and file, and the County Council be prepared to be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive and file, same motion for number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, First District.
Receive and file.
Subordered.
Item number seven, First District.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number eight.
Subordered.
Item number nine, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the matter be held on the order of business.
Subordered.
Item number 10, First District.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Subordered.
Item number 11, Third District.
Same motion.
Subordered.
Item number 12.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number three, 13, and that will be the order.
Item number 14.
Receive, file, and the matter be held on the order of business and referred to the Council and Committee of the whole, and that will be the order. Add-ons?
Under add-ons, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the change of address be approved as requested, please.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of the County Executive?
Nothing additional to report, please.
Thank you. Special committees?
The report be received, filed, and adopted as submitted. The Council approved the petition to establish the Green Trails Community Improvement District as set forth in the petition submitted, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Hold the form.
We have 10 speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Okay, please come forward when you hear your name called. State your name and address, and we'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. First speaker?
First speaker is Lynn LeBeu. Mr. Speaker, can we ask, I mean, Mr. Chair, can we ask the speaker to expel her name for us to make sure I have it right?
L-E, capital B-A-U-B-E.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, County Council. I live in Afton and commute every day to work on Graun, the Graaway corridor. I am requesting a copy of your traffic study. Should you decide not to produce the study, the citizens of Afton are prepared to do our own traffic study that doesn't have a county spin. Decreasing the number of lanes creates congestion, danger, and loss of business to this area. Why? Is it the country, the county's idea of a backdoor entry so that you can jam MetroLink and a bike path down our throats? It's been stated that you want to create more walking traffic. For what purpose? To walk to where? Beautification can occur without removing lanes and adding frivolous costs to us taxpayers. My understanding is that the MoDOT grant dollars are only for street pavement. MoDOT will not cover any additional cost. They will not guarantee sidewalk installation. If that be the case, the county would be responsible for the project. Thus, residential business county taxes would increase. Why? To create more congestion and considerable more danger? Our bridges are in disrepair in the state of Missouri, and some streets in Afton are over paved, pavement over pavement, thus causing runoff of water in yards and basements. This community has more pressing items to spend. Our money on our, and are our money not to spend. Here's a novel idea: Why don't you give the taxpayers their money back? Not every idea is a great street idea. This project is not a great idea. You don't live there, I do. Many years ago, at Holiday Inn South, when Steve Dethrone, County Councilman John Kimpee Zee, Steve, I asked you several questions of which you lied and put your evil spin to the answer regarding your opponent. Your reply, and I quote, was a call, was when you called me a fat bitch while threatening me in front of others that you are going to call the police.
Please get a hold of me.
My reply to you, to you, Steve, at the time, and I quote, "I can always lose weight, but you can never change the character of the man you are." I forgive you, Steve. I challenge each and every one of you, men and women, of, to be of honesty and integrity instead of puppets like Steve. An example for you to follow would be one of a humble servant such as Officer Blake Snyder, a man of integrity. This community pays your salaries, and the County Council are public servants to you and for the people.
Okay.
You are to represent us and serve us and not your own prideful egos.
Thank you.
And your own self-interests.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tony Pusosa.
Please address your comments to the Chair and use language that is appropriate for the setting. If you don't, we'll have to ask you to leave. Thank you. Hi, Tony.
How you doing? Good evening, Steve, Councilmembers. I'm also here to talk about the Great Streets, and I frequent the area. The businesses there, I've been to many of them, and yes, they do need improvement. I'm all for that. But as far as the narrowing of streets, I am against that. I think you need to keep it four lanes, five lanes for a turn lane. A lot of people take the route home from the city to the county, and if you narrow it down to two or three lanes, you have the same amount of traffic trying to funnel through that area, and I think that creates a safety hazard. It creates the instances of road rage, and that would make it safe for anyone sitting outside in a patio area at a restaurant or cafe or whatever is planning on going there. You also have to keep in mind that you have the middle-income, lower-income people that live there, that I think they're taxed enough. You're going to create a whole new tax district, and if you really want to bring people into that area to make it a profitable area, you need to keep the five lanes, because I can assure you, I have been down to the areas in the city where they've narrowed it down, and it creates a safety issue. As a medical professional, I've seen ambulances trying to get to Slough Hospital just sitting in traffic, blowing the horn with nowhere for traffic to go. And if that's my relative being worked on in there and they're not able to move, that's a problem. Those are the things that need to be considered. I think a lot of the things that we see here about the benefits, I think, are overstated. We need to keep the road open in order to bring the economics, because you want to bring in people from everywhere and not just the Afton area. If you're thinking closed-minded and the people just in the Afton area are going to frequent this area, it's not going to be a successful project. So I'm hoping that you take that into consideration. I think it's important to keep it five lanes. It keeps things open and really keeps things safe. You can still, I mean, engineers can figure out a way to put a bike lane if that's what you want and still keep it five lanes. This is the 21st century, anything is possible, I believe. So thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Denise Patterson.
Now, this is not, this is not the word. I can talk loud enough, trust me, on that one. I'm here, my grab boys, also. For your information, I'm Denise Patterson, and I'm in Afton, and this has been a nightmare for me. When I look at this and ask questions to the people who're setting these open houses, I'm getting some very, very unsettling answers. I'm going to start to see, see why it works out. They wanted to buy some property from the cemetery for amphitheater. I'd like to know who's going to pay the utilities on that amphitheater. I'd like to know who's going to do the cleanup and the setup of that amphitheater. I cannot find any information out from the people who are giving these demonstrations. I asked about this so-called senior housing that's going to go behind the U.S. Bank. I was told that they're going to take part in the parking lot in some of the houses that are back there. I asked the man if it was going to be senior disabled housing, and he told me, "Oh, that would be Section 8. I don't think that'll fly." Trust me, my disabled community community will be down there to pick and demonstrate. We've already got some stuff planned if this goes and flies. All right, now you're coming down to the businesses. We've got a lot of small mom-and-pop type business. They had special taxes these people wanted to install. It's going to go into that business saying, "You've got X number of square feet." Oh, you have a basement? Your tax just doubled. How do you expect those little mom-and-pops to stay there? Now, we got a cyclist that's been there for God knows how long. She probably won't move, but next door to her is an investment counselor. He doesn't have to stay there. He's renting. He can move up on wanton, and then his rent's going to go down because he's not going to be paying that tax, which is going to go on to his bill. What about all those little empty stores that's been down there? The landlord has run them, people that were renting out. Why? Why would you rent and rent somebody out that's paying you rent? They've been scanning idle for almost two years. Just recently, State Farm moved in there, and Jimmy John's is in there, but that's the only two, either about 12 or 15 stores that's been rented in two years? What does that landlord know that they're not telling us? Now, you've got the businesses along the other side that's been there for, I've been down to Afton since '72. They've always been there. You think they're going to get run out of there and you're going to go and pay this guy some rent? Come on. You're one of the businesses out. And then we get down to some of the real nitty-gritty things like how they're going to beautify this property. They're going to put in wide sidewalks for pedestrians. You've got to park someplace to walk there. They've got one bus going through there. They couldn't even get the bus company to come down and talk to them. Okay, they did that, the trees, oh, I love the trees. They put on the list of what they're going to do. Not made of Missouri trees, we got trees all over the place.
That's three minutes.
Locust trees, that's the ones that got the long seed pods. Walnut trees, pecan trees. My girlfriend's mother grows pecans for Blue Diamond. They produce 40 pounds of nuts a year. And then the topper was the sweet gum. I don't think there's anybody in here that would take a sweet gum tree from the county for free. And you're going to put it on a sidewalk where people are going to walk. Think about that, round balls, this sticky, can you see the lawsuits coming up?
We're going to, we're going to have to ask you to wrap up your comments. We need you to wrap up your comments. Your time has expired. Thank you.
This has been a heist. Somebody needs to look into it. We're going to be charging this tax in 63123 only case. County Council cut $8.5 million for West Forest. Did it, you know, needed it. Beautification was great, you know, that kind of project to help that community. I expect the County Council to do the same for me, not ask me pay for it all, because these people want to do this not once, not twice, but three times to tear up Graboids in a 15-year period, because we got to get used to it. Come on, do it once. If the project doesn't fly once, it's not going to fly every three times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Gene Hutchins.
Come on up. My name is Gene Hutchins. I live at 9447 Radio Drive in Afton. I live three-tenths of a mile from Graboy. I drive up and down Graboy Road probably six, seven, eight, nine times a day, and that's on a normal day. I believe that the proposed Great Streets Plan for Graboy Road is ill-thought. The idea of doing the road diet, cutting down to two lanes with a third middle lane, and then putting in street parking and sidewalks, there is not enough room in that roadway. You're going to have to be buying up more easements, and I don't think that it's really going to be very effective. The idea of setting up a community improvement district to create more taxes to cover that, how many times do we want to be taxed? The tiff that you granted to the Afton Plaza project makes sense. I supported that. I supported that as a Republican, okay? I spoke well of it, and I still think well of it, but I know that they need improvements in the street, but not to that. Keep it four lanes, improve the curbs, and I think you could get away with sidewalks, improvement on one side of the street. I just wish that these Great Streets people and these people that come up with these, excuse me, harebrained ideas about what's a great street and want to move people off of cars onto bicycles, it's just stupid. The automobile is here, use it. We're using it wisely, I think, and the greenies will tell you no, but I think that they've improved to the point that the idea of massively forcing people onto bicycles or other means of transportation is silly. And I'll tell you something, I don't ride MetroLink anymore. Thank you.
Next speaker is Debbie Earp.
Hi, I'm Debbie Earp. This is a first for me. I'm a little nervous. I'm here about the Graboy Street. It's my impression that had we, as a county, kept up the county roads as it was deteriorating, instead of letting driveways go in without sidewalk, the continuation of the sidewalk, without letting some of the small businesses get into these homes instead of a person living there, because we didn't buy enough property to go back now and redo that, I feel as if it's a mistake. I've lived in Afton on and off since I was four years old. We have had some of the greatest stores in the area. We've had a Schnuck store that was in that empty building. We've had clothing stores. We had a Jo-Ann's in there. Graboy is not the neighborhood that a lot of the Afton people go to, and it's not because there's no parking or because it's not beautiful or whatever, it's because the neighborhood has changed. People are older, people are no longer with 10 kids, the schools are getting smaller, the parishes are closing, and to spend this kind of money to block off lanes, to me, you might want to reconsider it. I feel as she does, that apparently you've told the business owners this is already going to happen because they're spending money on these buildings that haven't been spent on these buildings in a multiple of years. When you went into Jo-Ann's Fabric, Jo-Ann's, a business that was lovely in Afton, the guy never even fixed the roof leak. You had to walk around because the water was coming in. Now he's tearing down all of his buildings and building new ones? He must think this is going to happen. When I asked at the meeting if everyone in Afton had been notified, the young woman told me, "We can't afford to notify all the Afton people." If we can't afford to send everyone in Afton a mail-out about this, how can we afford to spend the money to do something that our taxes should have taken care of? It's like the Afton Community Center, which is too expensive to use. I hope I made some sense. I'm a little nervous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Berg.
I live at 9244 Laurel Hill Drive in Crestwood. Wow, here we go again. I think we did 15 weeks fighting the Complete Streets Program a couple of years ago. I love the cutesy names, by the way. I personally would like to see someone come up with incomplete streets or awful streets. We're here now on great streets, so I think what makes great streets are no potholes and ample lighting and easy access and good striping. That's just a personal opinion. I think it's irresponsible to spend money unnecessarily, but that in front of this group, some of you, is no surprise. I was interested in some of the marketing that I saw. 98% of the people want this. How many people attended the meeting? 50? And 49 of them said it looked great? That's an important piece of information to have because I don't see a lot of advertisement. What I see is a lot of shoving, and what I would like to see is if you're going to shove it in my neighborhood, why don't you shove it in your neighborhood and see how well it goes? Why don't we take Big Ben back down to one lane each way like it was when I was a child growing up in University City? My friend's mother, Joyce Banasak, chained herself to an oak tree to keep it from being cut down. Do you remember that? And she was arrested. So maybe we should do that with Big Ben and bring it all the way south through your neighborhood, Richmond Heights, I think it is, and on into Maplewood. Then we can run down Delmar, keep on going west, cross over 170. Maybe Forsyth would be a good one. Bring it right here through Clayton. Then maybe even Watson Road on the upper end of Crestwood. I think it's a terrible idea, and I think, you know, intentionally doing things to cause traffic congestion is irresponsible. When we fought complete streets, we had a number of people who were bicycle safety trainers and others that said that, you know, when you're driving down a road, the passing lane is on the right and the traffic lane is on the left. What happens when people want to turn into these businesses and run over a bicyclist who's in the right lane? I mean, is there any thought to this? I don't understand. And then I'd like to know money. I want to know what the costs are, and I want the real cost because benefits are always overstated, as are cost savings. Cost estimates are always understated, so I'd like to know what the costs are. And I would further like to propose that since you're into spending money and raising money, why don't you get an ordinance that requires bicyclists to have to have a license? Perhaps the fee could be $1,000 per year. That way, they have some skin in the game. I mean, every time I fill up my gas tank, boom, right into the gas tax I go to pay for my usage, so that would be one idea.
30 minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Pennett.
Lisa Pennett, 2915 Three Acres Lane. The Afton Great Streets, they're not great. We already talked about the marketing. I really want to talk about the bogus surveys that you guys keep on with. I don't understand. I go to these meetings and they got their little clickers, and then they start, you know, with this place of, "Do you guys like where your lanes are now? Do you want one less lane? Do you want two less lanes?" And then magically, collectively, we all say we want less lanes. Well, gee, I wonder how that happens? You have one person that shows up at a meeting, and if you start with, you want to keep it the same or go lower, then what do you think's going to happen? Collectively, we all want to reduce lanes, and we want a road diet. Now, most people I know, they don't like diets. I don't know anybody that likes diets. And most people that I know, first of all, they go to work, and they go to work in their car, and they pay taxes because they go to work in their car. So if you want us to take mass transit, then, I did get to listen to the county executive talk about on the radio the other day about how we have to get it under control with just all the crime that's going on, and I agree, we have to get that under control, especially for our users that's on the metro right now. But if we want to expand this like all these great streets do, Great Streets wants to take away our car lanes. I would ask each and every one of you, do you guys want to bike? Do you guys want to ride to work? Is this what you want to do every day? Do you want to be stuck to a bicycle or walking? Do you want to work, live, and play in the same little path that they put you on? Because that's what they want for everybody else. That's what they want for me. That's what you're saying that you want for the rest of us. This is not great. It's not a great plan. It's a United Nations plan, and we see how the rest of the world is operating. They get to work, live, play, eat, and exist, okay, under this communist model that they get to go and they get to work in their little factory and have their bowl of rice. That's not what we want here in St. Louis County. This is not great. So taking five lanes down to three in this road diet, it's a total lie to say that most attendees wanted this. We were there. We talked to them when they came in and they went out. And you know what? Most of them were screaming, saying, "We do not want this." So the studies are completely bogus, so I want to see where are you guys coming up with the studies and why are you not offering? Do you guys want more lanes? Do you guys want more parking? Why isn't that ever an option? And why isn't that ever addressed? Because most normal people, what they want is a great street. A great street means they want it paved, no potholes, they want to be able to drive their car. They don't want all these taxes, these multiple taxes that are part of this, and we want business. We want business owners. In Austin, Texas, they renamed this the Great Sidewalks because that's what you get. You get great sidewalks, so that's what they...
We're going to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Oh, so as far as that too, I think you guys have the rules. Actually, was that 3 minutes, but I can go as long as I want because there is no maximum? Am I correct? Because I'm pretty good with rules.
You have 3 minutes. We'll let you finish your thought, and we'd like to ask the next person to speak.
Okay. So with that, so it also talked about your stakeholders, and they felt safe biking. So they already stated in their study that they felt safe biking already, and only 44% said that they would bike at all. And yet, what is the top priority is more bike lanes. So again, why are we not paving our streets? Why are we treating our citizens like this? Why are we creating congestion when they want to go to work and they just want to have a good life with their family and pay their taxes? Most people are normal. They just don't want to have to come to these county council meetings and tell you, "Don't take away our car lanes." It actually seems crazy when you say it. You want to take away, you want to cause congestion. This is a crazy, crazy plan, and it's not great.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill DeWolff.
Good evening, Chair, council members, county executive. First, I want to start my comments by, I'm actually glad that Prop P did pass. I support law enforcement and even the critics that did not feel that it should pass. There should still be accountability factors with how the money is spent, but the real issue is public safety, and I support on the record for Prop P. With that said, public safety is a concern, and, you know, jokingly, I don't believe in fake news. So what's not fake is the crime and the death and the homicides and the fighting that's happening on MetroLink. So I don't believe that we should allow this news to turn into private meetings and private discussions. I don't believe that it should play out in the media of leaders having discussions without the public. Let me just make this statement so we're clear. As a community, when politicians and police have their private meetings, the community gets upset when something happens because they're never part of the dialogue. And then nothing against the media, but then they're the ones that do all of the distortion and the twisting. So then the community gets mad listening to those who edit the conversation. So it is imperative, like a preacher. When everybody's in church, they get to hear the preacher, and if the preacher says something foolish, then stick your head in the Bible and read it yourself. So if we as leaders are going to be preaching, then share it so everybody else can understand it because we're getting confused by hearing you say the soundbites that the media and the press give us, and then we're the victims of the misunderstanding. So we're going to have to hold you accountable because we're the ones riding the MetroLink, and we need a united front to stop the killing. 2015 and 16, and now we're in 17, and we're 40% higher than we were in 15 and 16. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chair, before we have the next speaker, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Sir, I want to encourage you and everybody in this audience to continue to come here and continue to hold your elected officials accountable. Never stop doing that. Hold our feet to the fire every chance you get, and thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention. First, county executive Steve Stinger's campaign received contributions of $12,500 each on March 31st from Robert Glardner and David Glardner, the developers of the old Northwest Plaza, taking their total to $260,000 for the Stinger campaign. This is undoubtedly a record for the most ever received by a politician in St. Louis County from developers of one project. After the recent shootings on MetroLink, the county executive has called for a summit to discuss security problems on MetroLink with Mayor-elect Lyda Cruisin and St. Clair County Executive Mark Kern. I'm not sure why it's taken so long. MetroLink has had a serious crime problem for a long time. Lyda Cruisin has been on the St. Louis Board of Aldermen for 20 years and has been a complete failure at doing anything about it, and the most severe problems have been in her ward. Steve Stinger was on the county council for six years, county executive for two years, and likewise has been a failure at doing anything about the problem. In his years on the council, I don't think he asked a single question about metro operations. So two people who have long been part of the problem are to take part in the summit that supposedly will find solutions. I can't imagine why anyone would be skeptical. Francis Slay has likewise done nothing. Here's what one news story said. Mayor Francis Slay vowed to add more police officers near the MetroLink stations and encourage Metro to beef up security as well. The date of the story, April 20th, 2008. This was after dozens of troublemakers descended on a Forest Park station and beat up everyone they could. What is often overlooked is that all the hell raisers and people who don't pay help Metro inflate the ridership numbers, which is always a priority at Metro. The St. Louis Police Chief puts the number at 75%, but Metro CEO John Nation says it at less than 8%. Another thing overlooked is that John Nation was a bad choice to lead Metro. Before being appointed, he was a zoning lawyer with zero experience in transit. You might recall, Mr. Chairman, that last year I suggested the council have a committee hearing on metro operations, but Michael Mara kept putting it off. Now might be a good time to reconsider. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom.
Last speaker this evening is Carol Strawbridge.
I'm Carol Strawbridge. I stay at 1315 Chapelton Drive, and I'm back again with my same concern. I understand that there seems to be some confusion, or maybe I'm just confused, so my question, inquiring minds want to know, what's happening with Jamestown Mall? And how did the Port Authority get involved? That's the last thing that I read about. I don't understand. Now, I understand about water and that the water is up the way, the river, but what's that have to do with Jamestown Mall? And how is the Port Authority involved? My request is as it was once before about two or three months ago. Would you please keep North County residents informed? We need to know what's going on. Actually, Jamestown is an eyesore. Every time I go up and down Lindbergh and I look over at that vacant property, that's just horrible. I'm a North County resident. I don't want to see that. So hopefully, we will get some information soon about what's going on from someone, even if it's the director of the Port Authority. He can give me a call, or she can give me a call, so I can find out for myself what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. introduction of bills.
Bill number 98, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $25,000 from the March of Diamonds Foundation, appropriating the same for support of a project enhancing women's health services, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 99, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart $67,810.32 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund and $73,482.7 from the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Trust Fund for payment of financial commitments incurred pursuant to the Northland Shopping Center Tier Free Development Agreement authorized by ordinance number 20,357. Bill number 100, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart $2,955.34 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund and $3,311.1 from the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Trust Fund for payment of financial commitments incurred pursuant to the Country Club Hills Tier Free Development Agreement authorized by ordinance number 23,277. Bill number 101, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart $89,382.97 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund and $103,92.58 from the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Trust Fund for payment of financial commitments incurred pursuant to the Grassel Plaza Tier Free Development Agreement authorized by ordinance number 21,822. Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart $748.35 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, payment of financial commitments incurred pursuant to the Lee May Plaza Tier Free Development Agreement authorized by ordinance number 22,011. Bill number 103, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents with Centene Center LLC, Centene Center II LLC, and the city of Clayton for the Centene Center II development, accepting dedication of right-of-way easements required of said development along South Henley Road. Bill number 104, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, release of 15.67 acres of right-of-way near Freeport Park, and authorizing sublease of said property to Lou's View Soccer Club for expansion of its facilities. Bill number 105, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District three easements and four temporary sloping construction licenses for installation of stormwater facilities in Bon Oak Park. Bill number 106, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance amending Chapter 101, Title I, St. Louis County Revised Ordnance, 1974's amended general administrative provisions by repealing and reenacting Section 101.020, changing to the Committee for Records Management. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills. Bill number 86, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 86.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 86 is perfected.
Bill number 87, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 87.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 87 is perfected.
Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Carter.
I move to perfect Bill number 88.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 88 is perfected.
Bill number 89, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 89.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 89 is perfected.
Bill number 90, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Dolan, and Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number 90.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 90 is perfected.
Bill number 91, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 91.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 91 is perfected.
Bill number 92, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill number 92.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 92 is perfected.
Bill number 93, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number 93.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 93 is perfected. Bill Number 93 is perfected.
Bill Number 94, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
Second.
I move to perfect Bill Number 94.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 94 is perfected.
Bill Number 95, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill Number 95.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 95 is perfected.
Bill Number 96, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect Bill Number 96.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 96 is perfected.
Bill Number 97, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 97.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill Number 97 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill Number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold Bill Number 116.
Bill Number 116 is held.
Bill Number 24, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to drop Bill Number 24 from the order of business, please.
Bill Number 24 will be dropped.
Bill Number 68, introduced by Councilmember Irby for Councilmember Page.
Move to hold Bill Number 68, and that will be the order.
Bill Number 77, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage to Bill Number 77.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Bill Number 77, yes.
Just give me a moment. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 77, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 77 is finally passed.
Bill Number 78, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage to Bill Number 78.
Second.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if you have a question. Given the real and pressing spending issues that are confronting the county, I'd ask Councilman Harder if he would consider holding Bill Number 78.
This bridge has been under scrutiny. It's fallen apart. It's a health issue, so I'm going to have to, we need to get this going. It's been held a long time. So I'd say no.
Okay, roll call.
Bill Number 7, do we have a motion to second on that?
Yes, we did.
Councilmember Irby?
I have a question. Councilman Harder, you said it's been held for a long time?
Well, I mean, they've been working on this project for a long time, trying to get the right money together and everything for this road. So it's a bridge that goes to a subdivision down by Eureka.
To a subdivision?
Yeah. And it's the only way you can get in and out of this area.
I vote no.
Councilmember Page?
No.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 78, there are four noes and three ayes.
Bill Number 78 is failed to finally pass.
Bill Number 79, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage to Bill Number 79.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 80, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 79 is finally passed.
Bill Number 80, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage to Bill Number 80.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 80, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 80 is finally passed.
Bill Number 81, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage to Bill Number 81.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 81, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 81 is finally passed.
Bill Number 82, introduced by Councilmembers Page, Wassinger, and Dolan.
This project is a very high priority project for me, and I would like to see it come to fruition. I do share a concern that we have a significant spending problem in St. Louis County. Until we get our hands around it, I would like to not move forward this project, and I will drop it from the agenda, and that will be the end.
Can I ask a question? Do we not have, I mean, is this a total dictatorship, or do we have any say in any of this?
I will accept your objection to dropping this from the agenda, and you can, we can call the roll. My motion is to drop it, so you're objecting to dropping it from the agenda. That's an order. So a yes vote is to drop it from the agenda.
Is there a second?
Peter, you don't need it, we don't need a second to object to dropping it from the agenda. All you need is an objection.
There's a motion, though.
Who got the motion?
How would you like to manage this, in a positive or negative vote? What's the cleanest way to do it?
There's a question before the council now, so... My opinion, there's a question before the council, that is, to drop, whether or not to drop the bill from the agenda. That's been moved.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
What is it?
There is no motion.
To drop the bill from the agenda.
There's a motion to drop it. Okay, aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Were these items in the budget for 2017?
There is a transportation, there is a park budget for 2017. There are a lot of things in the budget for 2017. Unless we're going to start moving Prop P at our rate of spending, we need to back off and look at all of our budget items and ask ourselves what our priorities are. I do not believe that we have our hands around the budget, and until we do, I'm not in favor of moving forward with this project.
What is the cost of this project? Do you remember?
$156,000, I believe, with the letter "F".
For all three parks.
Yeah, for bathrooms, yes.
I'd like time to look into it. I'm not ready to vote yes or no to drop it, so I'm going to abstain at this time.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes, to grab.
Councilmember Dolan?
No.
Councilmember Tracus?
Yes.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Mr. Chair, on the motion to drop Bill 82 from the order of business, there are four ayes, two noes, and one abstention.
The motion dropped carries. Next item.
Bill Number 83, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage to Bill Number 83.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Irby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.